Meeting, and again, a lot of those ideas that they presented tonight were in the plan, but not obviously as detailed as they showed us tonight. So this is something we can kind of work out, prioritize what parts of the plan are important now. Like Alderman Wesley said, the intersection, obviously, the most important, but we've had, you know, nature trails in our plan for some time now, and now the nature trails are incorporated into the rest of our plans. So this would be a good opportunity a month from now to really hammer down on a lot of these ideas talked about tonight, because it is a massive amount of topics, even though it's one topic, it covers almost our whole plan.
Do we have any idea the cost on something like this?
We've not gone to that step yet of calculating costs. That was, it's something we could do, but we can do ballpark estimates for some of these alons.
Part of it is that we would want to know which things are of interest, because, you know, each specific idea would have a cost attached to it, and then all the different options of that idea, such as a children's playground. Well, it depends on how many features you want to include in it. We'd have to know that. Or sometimes you start with a number first and say, well, if we allocated $100,000, what would we get versus $400,000 or something? So it's kind of, it's at the idea stage still, and we'd have to focus in on the idea to more accurately estimate the cost. I think even with the tower, we did a conceptual design for a tower, but that might go through further designs, and you might absolutely love that one, but you might want to look at some other ways to do it, and they would have a variation in cost. The same thing with that, the pavilion. The design that we showed is sort of a prairie-style thing using brick. That would have one cost versus a building built out of other materials, timber or something.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay, let me go a little further on this. I'd like to go forward, but where is the next step of how far to go with your company? I'd like to see a proposal of where we're headed with, if we're going to go further. I guess this question is for John then. What is the next step with this company and the cost?
Mr. Murmice.
I think, as we had stated before, we need to, and as Ed Euler's team had stated, we need to prioritize ourselves, decide what's important before we even, you know, get into those details. I think we need to have a major talking section on the plan before we go down that road. That's just my opinion. We would need to fine-tune what we want, because I think we're far off from any further proposal. That's my opinion.
But their, their plan is basically, for what their contract is, basically, is the plan.
But we're obviously not going to be able to do this plan all in one fell swoop. I mean, that would be very difficult to do. So we have to pick which components we want, and kind of phase them in, what's important. It's going to take a little time.
So then work the contract from that point of phasing in what we want?
Yeah, I think, again, we have to meet internally first.
Okay.
Alderman Jacob.
I think you guys did a great job, and, you know, I'm all for this. I think from what Eugene had said, I think the main thing here would be to at least get a price on the intersection, because the park could always come later. I mean, the intersection's something we kind of have to move on quickly. So it'd be nice to get some kind of cost estimate on just what's happening on Irving Park and Wooddale Road, and get some kind of cost estimate for, at the very least, that for now, which you could probably do that relatively quickly versus the park and all this other stuff. That's really the only thing we're under the gun to do, is with that intersection, to not delay anything.
We could focus on the intersection, maybe options, and planting around the intersection, maybe even put together costs for the, for the clock tower also.
Mayor, please.
Actually, I was going to agree with the manager. Some of the first things we want to start, probably the beautification process, probably be the, probably the cheapest out of the, out of the elements in the project. I know, I'm sure the pavilion's going to be a lot more expensive than planting trees and planters. And as far as the engineers, I know last year at, we were downtown, and the engineer was there, and we were talking about planters on the medians, and he's like, well, we really can't do that on Irving Park and right near Main Road. We walk out, Michigan Avenue's loaded with planters. I go, well, what are you telling me right here? He goes, well, I guess we can look at it. And I think you were with me that time, Gene. Oh, Christine, okay. But, right, that project's next year. Want to start with the beautification, the stuff that we can get our hands on, where you start to see something. The items with the pavilion, right, those are going to be discussion items, going to have to prioritize. And looking at that, where the clock tower was, I know we're moving the railroad boxes that are sitting there right now. I hope we're already moving them to the back of that project, right? Something we should check into, just to make sure where they're moving them.
Alderman Winger.
I'm good, thank you.
Alderman Jacob, you're good. Any other questions? Okay, once again, Mr. Murmice.
Just real quick, so just as a consensus, maybe get some more detailed information on the immediate intersection area, just for conversation's sake, in the next couple of weeks. Maybe have it ready by the time of the planning session, so we can move quickly.
Yeah, I would say if we could do, like, an overview of, we already have plans going in, we're looking at the medians, and kind of overlay what Euler's come up with, and how much of it matches, and what can we expand on quickly from that, I think is a good approach.
An easy addition to that intersection is stamp paving and color paving, you know, just to define the crosswalks and give the intersection more prominence. That, that's an easy, you know, addition, so.
Right, that's kind of what I was.
When we, we worked off of the engineers' plans, and they have allowed sufficient space for medians. It wasn't clear, as of the date that we got those plans, and I think that was probably six months ago, or maybe more, whether they were actually doing the medians or not. They didn't appear on the plans, I mean, but they're creating the space for it. So I don't know if they're, the plans didn't show at that time that level of detail. Maybe it's further detailed now, and we could ascertain what's, what they're proposing so far.
And make recommendations based on looking at those plans again.
Alderman Jacob.
Just one quick question. I know you guys said you have dealt with IDOT before on projects like this. Have you dealt with Metro also, or, because you were talking about putting in the bushes along the Metro tracks. I mean, dealing with Metro, that's a whole different animal, I'm told.
The railroads are, tend to be the most difficult parties to deal with, so I have not dealt with Metro before, but maybe they need some quick publicity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with no further questions, I'd like to thank you guys again. I think you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is report and recommendation on foreclosure property maintenance. Who's going to, John, are you going to take that, or Jennifer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have Inspector Joe Johnson here, so Joe and I are going to kind of tag-team our way through this.
Excellent.
All right, just, I'm going to give a little introduction, a little history on our property maintenance enforcement through the years. Once upon a time, a long time ago, our Wooddale property maintenance issues were pretty limited to the occasional tall grass complaint, but it was, at that point, it was more focused on maintenance of structures, possible overcrowding situations, those types of scenarios, as opposed to the wave of foreclosures that we saw. Once the real estate market collapsed, I don't think anyone anticipated or was prepared for the magnitude of the foreclosures, and that's obviously not only the everyday citizen, but municipalities in general. Foreclosures and dealing with these vacant properties is not a matter that's unique to Wooddale. All municipalities, you know, Joe can attest to this, when we go to the inspectors' meetings and conferences, this is usually one of the featured topics of conversation, and what we can do about that. When the foreclosure crisis first hit a few years ago, it was very difficult. I mean, we might have identified vacant properties that people had moved out of, because, I mean, the first thing that kind of gives it away is either there's a bunch of belongings out in the yard, in the driveway, and/or the grass and foliage kind of gets out of hand on the property. And what we were dealing with for the first several years of this foreclosure crisis was, from the time a property began to go into the foreclosure proceedings, till the time the bank actually gets title back, sometimes that period was well over a year. And during that time period, the former owners of the home, of course, refused any responsibility for it, and if we could find out the bank that held the mortgage on the property, since they didn't have title to it, I mean, they were not willing to expend the effort and monies to maintain these properties. So the first few years, it was really quite a struggle, as we were able to use public work staff to cut the grass, we did that. There was times where we had to hire outside vendors to be able to cut the grass. Occasionally, we'd have to hire a vendor to actually clean up the site. And what our typical remedy was, was, you know, we would put a lien on the property in hopes of recouping the costs at some point in time. The problem that you have with some of these short sales and sheriff sales is, once you get the legal system involved, it's kind of the option of the judge, or the option of where your lien comes in the chain of title, as to whether or not it gets satisfied or not. Real estate taxes are typically the first funding that comes out of any proceeds from a sale, and then typically, next would be your mortgage and so forth. Years ago, municipalities putting liens on for cutting grass and maintaining properties was almost like a footnote on the list of who gets paid when. There has been some legislation, and, again, Joe will give you a little background on that, that is causing the banks to, forcing them to be more responsible to care for these properties, not only sooner than later, but also to be responsive to the efforts that the cities and municipalities have put into maintaining this property, and allowing us to recoup our costs a little bit quicker. Vacant structures, I know we get questions from elected officials a lot of times, is, you know, why isn't this posted unsafe, or why isn't this posted unsafe? A vacant structure itself is not automatically classified as an unsafe structure. If it doesn't have any broken windows, if the windows are locked, if the doors are locked, if the place is not really in that bad of a state of disrepair, just because a place would have long grass and tall weeds, it does not necessarily qualify to be posted as an unsafe structure. What we do post the structures, when we become aware of them, is a posting that says, do not occupy, prior to contacting the building department. What that does is that allows us to have staff go in, do a pre-occupancy inspection on these vacant buildings, identify what types of issues might need building permits to correct, and get those things taken care of before somebody moves back in. We have had foreclosures in the past that do warrant an unsafe structure posting, and when that happens, then those properties are also posted accordingly. One thing to remember, and this kind of straddles not only the foreclosed and vacant properties, but even some of the properties that are being occupied right now. Just because someone may not keep their property in the same condition that, you know, we might keep our property, doesn't necessarily mean there's a violation there. So we can't really just blanket, go through town, and, you know, constantly be, be on the residents about the conditions on their property. Property owners do have certain rights to privacy, so it's hard for, for staff. We can't, for example, just walk onto a property and go into their backyard and start giving them a laundry list of things to, that needs to be repaired. Any kind of violation, and again, Joe can give a little more background on this, it has to be open and notorious. You have to be able to see it from a public way, for example, unless you have a specific complaint, and you feel that there might be an unsafe or hazardous condition. At that point, we do have right of entry to go into the property. But just in general, we can't just go into a neighborhood and start walking around in the backyards, looking for property maintenance violations. I guess kind of tied to that is, we cannot enforce good ideas. We can only enforce things that are backed up by the code, and that can be defended in court. So with that, I will turn it over to Joe Johnson. He does have a little PowerPoint here, and I know he has some additional comments.
Thank you, John. John, pretty much summed things up pretty well. What I got here are just three houses, or three properties, that we've had success with, and to show you how things have come along in the years since we've been doing this. 2008's when things really started dropping out, and since three, since 2008, we've had about 465 foreclosed properties. 465 foreclosed properties since 2008, that's when things started falling out. Now, these don't mean that they were vacant. Foreclosed property can be people still living in the house, make a payment once every three months, it'll go in and out of foreclosure, this can go on forever. And to get somebody vacate a property, very difficult for the bank or anybody else, and you guys are familiar with the unincorporated property over here that we've been discussing of late. I mean, that's a prime example, and that's happened several times in town. So to start this thing here, so show one of our early properties, quick history, went into foreclosure, in and out. My grandmother was sick, went down south, and grandfather, grandson moved in, had trouble maintaining the thing, had a lot of, lot of problems trying to keep up with it. We had to be on it for property maintenance problems for, for literally years. This is probably about a three-year project. Over there constantly, citations, just, just trying to work with the people. Again, people are in situations where the money is sparse, so we're having trouble keeping and maintaining. Now, this obviously is not a problem like that, it just needs to be cleaned up. Then we started getting into some unsafe conditions that we found. They were very cooperative with us, but, again, just, we're incapable. So as we went through, you see different stages of it. Here's where he started to get in control of things a little bit, tried to get things under control with his funds as best he could, and kept working with him, working with Same property, and then he kind of started falling off again. Things got bad. Citations were written again, and this is again going through. Just to show you the maintenance on the house, there's several more pictures like this. Electric was actually hanging off the side of the wall. We had to, we had to bring in, come, had to fix that stuff for them. And we started getting control, they finally were, were moved out of the place, and the bank started getting control of it. We kept on them. I got a couple of good contacts with several different people in several different, several different banks. We got it cleaned up pretty good. Then it went into the next phase where it was sold to a young gentleman, and we went from here, and this was in a matter of months. Kid did a wonderful job, he bought a couple more properties in town, my understanding, too. And you're seeing this all over, you're seeing companies coming in and buying them properties, which Alderman, well, Roy's not here, Alderman Wesley knows about, a couple of properties that he's familiar with. And beautiful, house has been sold, somebody's living in it now. This was one of my very, very first, and this went for three years. Again, nobody, I could get ahold of nobody. The wife was estranged from the husband, and trying to get something done here. Again, citation, I talked about citation, I still do not even know what these residents looked like. I never had any contact whatsoever. This was almost impossible, the neighbors were helping, young man next door was mowing the lawn, couldn't get anything done here. Finally, I got ahold of a nice lady down in Texas, once the bank finally took it over, went into foreclosure, after writing citation after citation, and the guy just kind of bolted on it. But the neighbors were just aghast, had to get the police involved, I don't know if Chief Besta remembers, they actually had this trailer towed out for me. And I would say within a three-week span, after getting ahold of somebody at the bank, after, after things started easing up, you started to see a change in things. So we went from this, down to now we're here. I mean, I swear to you, I drove past his house two days ago, and had to back up and take a look to make sure it was the right house. I couldn't even recognize his house. Went from that, to that, and that to that. These were my early ones. Now, this one just came on, oh, what, about five weeks ago. It was just unbelievable. This is the posting that John will talk about, this was a dangerous condition, the inside was appalling. We had squatters in there, could not get them out, it was in foreclosure. We went, locked the house up, came back, they're back in it, going in windows, it was horrible. Grass was tall. We ended up having one of our vendors come in, he cleaned as much up as he could, just to mow the lawn for the first time, because what happens with the foreclosures is, the bank will finally get ahold of it, but it will still take time afterwards. They'll have to go out to their preservation company, preservation company will have to give bids to clean this up, and it takes weeks and weeks. We didn't have weeks and weeks, so we did bring somebody in to at least move the stuff and get the lawn cut originally. Then I finally got ahold of preservation people, they got ahold of me, dealt with another woman from the mortgage company, and she assured us that within three weeks, you wouldn't even know that this house was in foreclosure. This is, this is how far things have come along. And this is what we got now, and this is, this is about a five-week turnaround. So things are moving a lot quicker in, in some instances, and this would be one of them. And you wouldn't even tell what was going on there now. Inside's been cleaned up, a little bit of work has been done on the outside, and the posting's been off, and that's that. So Illinois has seen a 15% drop since last year in foreclosure activity, but Illinois is still the worst, third worst foreclosure state overall. Nationally, we're seven and a half year low in foreclosures, and a rate drop continues at this pace, we'll be at normal levels of foreclosure prior to the, to the historic crash or crisis that we had. So things are definitely working in the right direction. What we would do with foreclosures is we would attempt to, to find a responsible party and enforce maintenance upon them. But as you know, if somebody's in foreclosure, they're obviously have problems financially, and that was posing difficulty, difficult. As John would say, we just couldn't get, we couldn't get the people to work with us because they just didn't have the money, and it just, it wasn't working well. The bank wasn't going to take any responsibility, the people weren't taking responsibility, and the influx of time was, it was just a long period, because, I mean, the people just weren't moving, and the banks weren't moving. It just was, it was a bad thing, it was just a bad situation, so. After years of government involvement, banks have been forced to somewhat be more responsible to maintain the properties, as long as they're vacated. They could not do anything till they're vacated. So this too is a lengthy process, and this too is a lengthy process due to preservation companies, as I said earlier. Since 2010, we've had 308 foreclosures, the 300, the 465 were since 2008, but 2010, we have 308. Of the 308, 54 are bank-owned properties. 39 were bought privately, meaning a short sale occurred, sale prior to the property going into foreclosure. 22 were sold to a third-party purchaser, and 87 were banks sold and have been purchased by private persons since. 44 are in a pre REO phase, or bank-owned phase, meaning the lender, the lender repossessed the property and has not yet got the quitclaim deed. That's pretty much where we're at. I mean, things are slowing down in the area. Our program that we've always used is successful. We are having properties cut that need to be cut by a private vendor. I started out the summer with, what were my numbers? 40 to date needed to be cut. You know, these are not a foreclosures, they're all properties, but foreclosures were, were in there. And now, I mean, since, since that early date, I mean, I can't, maybe have five. So the people have caught on, and then they're getting them cut, so, I mean, that's pretty much it. I don't know if you guys got any questions, or?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
I apologize, I don't know if the question came up about the fees.
You're the first question.
Oh, okay.
Fees for?
I talked to John a little about this, about the fees of what we charge. What, could you go through the procedure of, if we hire a contractor? How do, how do we retain our money? Do we add extra onto it?
From the standpoint of a lawn mowing lien, or something along that line?
No.
I'm referring, I'm referring to staff time. Who pays for your time to go out there, to put that little flag up there, to say it needs cutting? Who pays for you to call the landscaper up and hire him to cut the grass? Who pays for your gas and your vehicle to go out there and do it? I know it's part of your job. And the landscaper comes in and says, okay, I'm going to cut this lot for $30. Do you take that fee of $30 and say, okay, Mr. Forrest, you owe the city $30 now because we cut your grass? I want to know what the...
What the process is?
Mr. Johnson.
We'll have to, I'll notify, I will post a property, seven days if it's not cut, I'll send it to a vendor, unless I get a call and we make some kind of arrangement. I'll send it to a vendor, he'll cut it, they'll eventually send us an invoice, which we will send to finance, and then they're paid, sent upstairs, I believe, and then the property is weaned through the county.
That's not my question. My question is dollars.
I think his question is, do you add any money to cover the cost of you running around to the actual vendor cost of $30?
I do not do that.
Mr. Forrest, maybe you can answer that.
Yes, at this point, we really, the way the property maintenance program is set up, and when we hire a vendor like that, it does not, we don't have anything specifically that talks about a additional fee to recoup staff time and so forth. Staff really doesn't have the authority to just arbitrarily set fees for something like that. What we do have is a section in the building code, for example, that says if we have to hire a consultant, or we send plans to a consultant, we add a 6% fee onto whatever the costs are. So if you would like us to start, you know, adding a particular fee, whether it be a set fee or a percentage, you know, that's direction that we would really need to get from the council. But as far as just arbitrarily setting a fee, staff really doesn't have the authority to do that, and right now, we're not doing that. We're just trying to recoup the out-of-pocket that the city has expended.
I'll call on myself first.
What?
I run the committee. Can't you, if, if there's a building infraction or something, we can find people, correct? Is there not that same capability as a maintenance issue or infraction? Isn't there, you know, a minimal $15? a minimal $15 fine if they didn't do something or perform? Mr. Forrest?
That was actually going to be my next part of the presentation here. I just wanted to kind of give you a Reader's Digest version of the enforcement process, how it works, what happens when we write a citation. So really, once a property is recognized, whether it come in from a complaint from a resident or an elected official, or if we just happen to find something when we're out during our course of inspections, if that property, if the grass and weeds are getting tall, and by the way, the city of Wooddale, our code says that once grass and weeds gets to be 12 inches, at that point, that's when it becomes a violation. So what happens is Joe will post the property. We have these little yard stickers. It's a stake about this tall and a card on there that notifies the owner that, you know, that the property is in violation. They have seven days to cut that grass, bring it into compliance. And as Joe said, if he calls and says, "Well, you know, my lawnmower's broken," or "I'm out of town," or "It's too wet," we will give him a few extra days. So a lot of times, typically, people have 10 days to comply. If they don't comply by that time, one option is for us to issue a citation. Typically, when we issue a citation, that can be a dollar amount, anything from $25 up to $750. Or we can, conversely, we can issue a must-appear-in-court citation. When we issue a citation, it's something that we kind of make a judgment call at the time. If you issue somebody a citation that has a dollar amount fine on it, and they choose not to pay that, then they would automatically be assigned a court date. If they don't show up to the first court date, then the judge assigns another court date. If they don't show up to the second court date, we can request that, you know, there be a summons set out, sent out to require them to come. But what you're looking at here is week after week after month after month before we would finally get this person into court. What we found to be more effective is to issue a must-appear-in-court citation as our first citation that goes out, because then the court date is automatically scheduled the following month, whatever is the closest court date. Joe does go to court once a month for the different citations that he issues. And what we do is with a must-appear-in-court citation, that allows the judge, the latitude to set whatever the fine amount may be. Typically, our prosecuting attorney and the judge, to be quite frank, are more interested in getting compliance rather than they are being punitive and trying to collect money from people. That being said, typically, the minimum fine that somebody would have to pay, aside from the fact that they have to take off of work, show up in court, possibly bring an attorney with them, is the judge, or what we've instructed our prosecuting attorney to do, is the minimum fine amount would be court costs, and then enough funds to cover the city attorney's time, and then, you know, something for staff time. Again, that, there is no set figure there. That figure can be fluid. Sometimes the judges will go along with our recommendations. Sometimes the judge's approach is if by the time it gets to court, if the person has brought the situation into compliance, they say, "Thanks, have a nice day." And sometimes they don't assess any fine. It's up to the judge to do. So hopefully, that gives you a little more background on how the enforcement works and the issuance of citations. Again, the bottom line is what we want is compliance. We want people to bring the property into compliance, and, you know, everybody wins at that point.
Alderman, Jacob?
What do the other communities do? I was told that for this meeting, you guys were going to make some phone calls and find out what other communities do.
The enforcement proceedings in the other communities are all very similar, you know, minor variations. But, you know, again, typically, you find a violation, you notify the property owner, you give them a certain amount of time to comply. If they don't comply, citations are issued. What we have found out, City of Wooddale Property Maintenance Code, Municipal Code allows grass to become 12 inches tall before it's considered in violation. Itasca is eight inches. Bensonville is eight inches. Elk Grove is six inches in a residential, eight inches in commercial. So there is a little bit of latitude and variation there. I don't know, Joe, you've attended a lot of the inspectors' meetings. Do you find much of a variation as far as procedures procedurally?
No, procedures are pretty much the same, I think. I don't think there's a lot of citations being written for anything along this line, or anything really. I mean, everybody is just basically out for compliance. I'm finding that a lot of things are mostly complaint-based. No one's really driving around too much because of the work with the foreclosures and other things. There's just not that much time. But if they do see something, they do try and get it rectified, obviously. But that's what, that's what I know and I find out.
Alderman, Jacob?
And you said ours is 12 inches before we even do anything? I made a couple phone calls myself to community. One of our neighbors, after eight inches, they give a three-day warning. After that, they get a $25 fine. After that, every three days, they get another $25 fine to the city. And I didn't ask when they take them to court or must appear. But again, they start at eight inches. In three days, we're at 12 inches, and we give them seven days. The lawn's going to be a foot and a half high. Over here, it's eight inches, and in three days, it might be 10 inches high. So we're already ahead of the game. By the time we're doing our foreclosures, the grass is two, three feet high. I mean, why is 12 inches our policy? I mean, has that always been the policy? Who set that policy?
It's the ordinance. Mr. Johnson?
It's the ordinance.
Do you have any more to say, Mr.?
No, I mean, that's the ordinance we follow. I mean, that's what it is.
Let me make one step statement, and then Alderman, Roy, Wesley.
It's because you're on the committee.
Exactly. Thank you. What is your opinion? My thought initially here is to change the 12 inches to a lesser number. At the same time, I don't want to have you guys driving around for lawnmowers because six inches, let's say if I go to six inches, which sounds better, you know, but then you might have somebody calling on the neighbor because, you know, I keep mine at four and his six, you know what I mean? So it could get out of hand.
Yes.
But I do think a number less than 12 is something that we could live with. What would your recommendation be?
12. Mr. Johnson?
I mean, we try to catch it before 12. I don't see, I mean, this is a, this is a touchy situation. You get a lot of rain, you get people can't mow their lawn. I mean, yeah, on vacation, six, eight inches goes pretty quick. And to be on people for something like that, I mean, I just don't see that. People are going to do the right thing. They just got to, they just got to have time to do the right thing.
Well...
You'll have the properties that aren't going to do that and we're on those people. You've got vacant properties that are around, and those things are on a schedule to get cut. And then they, you know, if they're on a two, three-week schedule and they get higher than 12 inches, I mean, we can hit them. I mean, we can go in there and get them cut and hit them and give them citations, but that's your call. That's your guys' call, not mine.
Alderman, Roy, Wesley, before you come on.
All right. Player away. Okay. 12 inches is fair enough. The reason is, is bluegrass, Kentucky bluegrass, you're cutting it three inches in a week, guarantee you, you're at six or seven inches with the rain and stuff. Seniors, some of them are getting it cut every two weeks because they can't afford it. So now you're, now you're over a foot. So what are you, and Alderman Jacobs, I understand what you're saying, but landscapers fall behind too on cutting their grass too, and you're going to blame the, no, don't raise your hand yet. I'm not done. But what I'm saying is we're hitting everyone. I like to hit these foreclosures or these where you have to go out, and we have to recoup our costs there. If they, if, we got off subject here of my question, because I still don't get my question answered, that I want to sit there and charge these for your time, for what you do, for hiring a landscaper. I mean, you got a landscaper going out there for 30 bucks, and he's breaking up blades, and he's cussing up a storm up there because he's breaking blades. And he's not going to want to come back to Wooddale. So in return, he's going to up the price. But in return, we need to get, we need to charge them for your time too.
Yeah.
Somehow, some way.
Mayor, please.
Basically, I was told by many people, three inches. You should cut your grass at three inches so the roots get strong, just like Alderman Wesley just said. In a week, I can tell you, I'm in violation every week. By the time I cut my grass, I'm at six inches.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you guys will be so busy writing tickets. I think part of the problem is Alderman Jacobs said, you know, we're at seven days, but other communities are three days. This becomes a legal question. How fast can we get them to, I mean, we can cut some time right there, I think. But six inches is really, I mean, would you say Elk Grove's at six?
Elk Grove at six, Addison at six, Beeville and Itasca at eight.
I mean, six inches, you guys will be right. You might as well come down the block and you can hit all my neighbors at the same time, because we cut them once a week.
Hit the city too, then.
But I think, but I think, let's not get out of hand here. I think that everybody would understand if it rained for two weeks and nobody cut their grass. That's not the idea, is to punish everybody with their lawn. But we don't have to wait till it's 12 inches. By the time the notice gets to them, it's 14. By the time it's seven days, it's, you know, theoretically two foot under Alderman Roy Wesley's guidelines, you know. And then we have to send in not a lawnmower, swather, and then, you know, the hay bales are left on the front lawn to further exacerbate the situation. So what I'm asking for is we look at, obviously, we, you recognize the homeowner and some of the straits that they might fall in, but the property owners, the right, the left, and front and back also have rights. So there just has to be a fair implementation of the process, and maybe taking it down to eight inches in five days, or eight inches in four days, knowing that you're not going to drive around and write everybody a ticket for eight inches, right? Just like the police chief doesn't write everybody for going 30 and a half miles an hour down Irving Park Road. He waits to 30.75.
Can I do a follow-up? Mr. Forrest?
I think, I mean, this is almost like a two-part question, because we're talking about at what point do we require somebody to cut their grass? You've got properties where there are residents that are living that are not behind on their mortgages. They're totally current on their mortgages. They might be on vacation for two weeks, or they might have a broken leg, or the lawnmower might be broken. That's one scenario. The other one is the vacant houses that are foreclosures. I mean, in a way, we want to be equitable and fair across the board, but really, I mean, does somebody who's living in the house and home, do we treat them differently than a bank that has a foreclosed property where we have to track down the bank? They've got to get the vendor out. They've got to...
Well, I'm going to have to jump in before you finish the story, because I understand what you're saying. And a vacant house is a little different than a homeowner, an elderly person, and a broken leg. We understand that you went there and that the person has a broken leg or it rained two weeks. But we also understand in other properties, vacant. What I'm saying to you is we have to be proactive in our community to make it look good. You know, I'm not looking to penalize, because I'd be with the mayor, you'd be fined, and me too occasionally, because I can't get my wife to cut the grass every week.
[laughing] Mayor, please.
I was going to say, you know, you said eight, Alderman Woods, but, you know, what at, what about at 10 inches, we give them, hey, you know, at 12 inches, we're going to fine you. You got to get this cut, something like that. I don't know. And I don't know what kind of burden that puts on you guys. And I'd really like to know if we can go to this. If somebody else is doing three days, why do we have to wait seven? I know that's a legal question, but I don't know.
Let me just get, Alderman, Jacob?
I agree with Alderman Woods here. You know, the intent is not to pick on the person with the broken leg. The idea is, we can't, the number-one thing for people coming into the city, no one's going to buy a house in this city. I could drive through Elk Grove Village. I could drive through Bensonville. Those communities have, don't seem to have the issues that we have when I drive through Wooddale. If I was a homeowner, I, if I was looking to buy a house, I'd probably look to buy an Elk Grove before I bought a house here. They don't have the problems we have, so why don't they have these issues? Again, they have a six inch. I'm not sure how quickly they do it, but the town I called, eight inches and then three days. It's like Art said, if it was eight inches or say 10 inches, and they have three days or five days, then that's it. I called about one of the foreclosures myself, and the thing was about three feet long. And when we did mow it, there was the Bay of Hala, you know, it was, I mean, it was all dead grass on the lawn. It looked terrible. So in that case, we should have had the landscaper at least break that up if we're going to wait three feet. So I'm with Alderman Woods. I mean, we have to be a little bit stricter. The vacant house is a little bit more important than the, you know, person that's away on vacation for two weeks.
Thank you. Alderman, Roy, Wesley? Comment?
Yes. Alderman Jacobs, I don't know where you've been looking and saying that the other towns don't have problems. I have customers in Elk Grove, they have problems. And I've talked to Elk Grove. I've talked to Itasca. I have residents there. I've talked to the villages, because I do them on a daily basis, talk to villages, so, because of all the rain and stuff. So they do have the same problem, but you don't see it because you're driving through it. I don't know if you're calling them, so we're all in the same boat here.
Alderman, Eugene, Wesley?
My question is, why don't we just hire a zoo and get all the goats in town and let them be rented to eat the grass? Because I'll tell you, it seems like we're going back and forth with this, Dean. Let's make mine up. In which direction, we go? I'm in favor of doing stronger with the foreclosures than anything, okay? Residential, we should be work with them as best as we can, okay? But let's get off this. We talked about this 15 minutes or a half hour. Why don't we just fence in some goats and rent them to people if we're going to talk about that?
Mr. Johnson?
I can say that I get, I don't get even a half a dozen complaints about grass from residents. That never happens. I mean, very, very rarely do I get a call from a resident about a complaint. As for single-family people living in houses, that rarely happens. You'll get rentals that people aren't cutting, and I'll get on those people. And again, I do agree with the three-day thing. That would be a good idea. 10, three, that helps a lot. There's no doubt about it. And as for writing citations, things along that line, that's counterproductive. That doesn't, that doesn't solve a thing. It never solves a thing. It's just a waste of time. The best thing is to work with people, get the compliance done and get it done. The vacant lots, decisions got to be made by what you guys want to do with vacant lots in town, because those things are put on a schedule. If it rains, it's going to go fast, you know, they're just vacant property. I mean, and everything can't be cut. It's just, this isn't a utopia. It's just not going to happen. Like I said, and I get very few complaints about it. But we are on top of this stuff. I mean, I don't, I just don't, I don't, I don't know.
Alderman, William?
Thank you. I'm going to, I have a question, then I'm going to make a motion to put something on the table. But along the lines of what you just mentioned is where I'm going with this. I'm going to ask you, so the 12 inches, do you find that, oh, if it were nine inches or eight inches, life would be so much better? According to what you just said, it doesn't sound like it, correct? There's only a handful of when it gets to that point, and you're in the middle.
Yeah. I mean, I'm only one guy. I mean, I will miss property. It's going to happen. People are going to have backyards that we can't see, things like that. That's where I'll get my complaints.
Sure.
And I do, on video, I do try to hit places before they're 12 inches. I will stick that thing in the ground and say, you know, get this stuff done. Again, I mean, I'm only one guy. I've got a lot going on, but I do try to keep up on that stuff. 10 inches, if I can hit it before 10 inches, I'd like to hit it before 10 inches. But again, I can't guarantee I'll do that. And the three-day thing is a great idea, though. That I like. I never liked the seven days. I never really liked the 12 inches either. But I think that would benefit us, yeah.
Okay, so to take it in pieces, then, I'm going to make a motion to draft, to redraft the ordinance, or to amend the ordinance to go from seven days to three days.
I would second that.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, the three days, you know, I remember having a conversation with the attorney. Well, you got to give them time, you know, you can't just, you know, and the week, you know, he mentioned the week, but, you know, I think one of the towns that he's talking about three days, I think he's the attorney over there as well. So I'm just curious, as to the legal... curious, as to the legal for us before, you know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. And that does kind of make sense. I mean, people do need time. And again, I will work with anybody, and some, sometimes you just have to do that. Someone's gonna have some kind of a circumstance, and just, you know.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we want to be a town that just is beating on people like that. I mean, people will do the right thing if they know what to do. And generally, that's what we try to do, is educate them, and get them to get it done. And it generally works. I mean, I know who all the players are. I've been here long enough. I know who to whack and not to whack, for lack of a better term, who to watch, and who to be on. I know all that stuff.
The repeat offenders.
Yeah, I know that stuff. I mean, I just don't see the deal.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Okay, Mister Player. Just remember, when you, when the detention pond, we're gonna change it to ten, when it gets to ten, you better contact Mister Gallas to cut that detention pond, because it's gonna, it's gonna be up there when it's raining. I don't know how you're gonna handle that.
Well, I, I know Mister Gallas has been pretty, pretty helpful to me with the situations we've had now.
I understand that, but his, they've been up there, too.
Yeah, but I mean, those ponds, I mean, if you're talking inside of those things, I mean, how do you get in those?
I understand that, but-
Because these, a lot of these things aren't draining. We've got a lot of problems with that stuff.
I want to know, Mister Chairman, fine, we talked about that. How about charging more for Joe's time? Are we gonna put that on future items to talk about?
I think that's a discussion for the city attorney and staff to, one, what we can do, what, what the existing ordinances and codes say, what we can do, talking to the city attorney. And then, three, comes down to what Mister Johnson touched on, and that's, how aggressive do you want to be? Because I can tell you, knowing the code that I know, that he could probably go out and write a citation for everybody on the block if he truly wanted to. So, it's what are-
I'm talking about when you have to call the landscaper, and that's a different situation.
I do know that when they lean the property, if it's a three-hundred-dollar lean, I know that it, it is a higher price that is put into the county. I do know that. I don't know what the figure is. I don't know how they come to that, but the clerk would be able to tell you that. I do know that it doesn't go in at three hundred. It would go in at four-fifty or something. I, I don't know how they account for that, but, but I do know that is, that is something that happens.
Mister Forrest?
We'll have to verify the, the deputy clerk that really handles the liens and so forth is off on maternity leave right now. Mister Wilson is off this week, so some information that we'd hope to have available for you tonight, we really can't. But we, we will talk to the city attorney. We'll find out what types of fees can be added for staff time legitimately, where we would have a good chance of recouping those, and then we can get back to you on that. As far as procedural, policy and procedural method, what we will do is, you know, we'll have Joe, when, when he sees properties where the tall grass is getting around ten inches, we'll put the posting in right now while we're waiting for, if we have to change this from three days to seven days. At this point, it's still going to be at seven days, but we'll post the properties when it gets to be about ten inches, as opposed to waiting for it to get twelve. So, we'll do that, short-term, enforcement-wise.
Alderman Winger, you, you had a motion? Did you wanna, we didn't get a second on that yet. Do you want to keep the motion?
I second it.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carries?
No.
Uh-uh.
Do a roll call.
Roll call.
I'm asking for a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No. Mister Chairman, and I will ask that we do not change the ordinance until we get the correct language in that we talked about with the attorney, because I am not willing-
You gotta go to council.
I, I'm insane. I, you know, we passed it here at committee. I'm insane. I don't want to spend the money for attorneys if we're gonna have another debate on it.
Mister Murmas?
Can staff just get some clarity on the motion? Did, was it the, the ten inches and the seven days to three days? Was it both in the motion?
The, the height of twelve inches stayed, and only the duration or timeframe was shortened.
So, no change with the inches?
Misses, Miss Alderman Winger could correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct. And, and then, as we do business normally, that if the attorney, when it's getting drafted, if they say, well, you can't do it, then we won't do it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You're gonna sit here and-
Alderman Roy Wesley?
You're not gonna sit up here and spend attorney fees without being approved by council yet. You can't do that.
The attorney drafts the amendment and brings it to council. So, that, that part is gonna happen, that Mister Johnson's gonna have to go to the attorney and say, here's what we're looking to do. I mean, that, that, that's gonna happen at some point.
Do you want to make a motion to do that, then?
No, the debate's over. The motion was voted on, it passed. We're gonna move forward on that. This item's closed. Items to be conferred at future meetings, Lakota Group's City of Wooddale Wayfinding and Signage Design Project, August twenty-second, and approval for staff for minor zoning variations, August twenty-seventh. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Your attorney fees are gonna-
Alderman Taker, record everyone's presence still?
So, move. Second.
Opposed? I have a report and recommendation for Mayor's Community Charity Ball. I'm gonna defer to Jeff, I did say all in favor.
You did. All in favor, aye.
All in favor? Opposed? No one opposed? Report and recommendation for Mayor's Community Charity Ball. I'm gonna defer to City Manager Jeff Murmas.
Thank you. I'll try to make this brief and not overly complicated. This came up through the course of the budget, and through the course of the city receiving correspondence, soliciting donations for various charitable organizations. We do get a number of these throughout the year. We, we see more and more each passing year. This issue was brought up because one of our neighbors does a similar program. How it would work is, we would facilitate discussions with all the charitable organizations in the community, get them to, you know, sign on to the idea of, you know, having a one charitable event. You would obviously need an organization to facilitate the event, kind of be the master planner of the event. But the, the theory of the plan would be, each organization would get their representative cut by how many tickets they sell on their end, and what items are donated on their end, and how much is, how much money is collected through those donations, or raffles, or auctions, or whatnot. So, basically, you need a, an overall leader within the process of the Mayor's Ball, which could be us. And then, you obviously need buy-in from all the other charitable organizations to participate in an event like this. Would take, obviously, planning, staff hours to do something like this. If we were to initiate this, that's really all I have. I don't have a huge report. It's not a complicated topic, so.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Give me a definition of your, as an organization, Benton High School. If one, one, like the band helps with the event, does that help for the ants to get money to, then?
I think, you know, the school district one hundred overall would, or school district seven, or whatever school district, would act as one entity, have each, you know, their, their band would go out, solicit sales, their palm squad would go out, solicit sales. It'd go back into one, you know, District one hundred pool, and then be divvied up from there. Again, you don't want to make it too overly complicated.
Mayor? I did a little research on this. I talked to Addison, who handles this, this fundraiser. I've got one of their books here. Addison Chamber of Commerce, Addison Rec Club, the Trail Theater Boosters, Concord Lutheran School, District Four Educational Foundation for Excellence.